There you go. Okay, good evening all, welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Business Meeting of the Board of Education. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In case you're not aware of our emergency exits, we have two behind you and one over here, and run for your lives. I need a motion for the Order of Agenda, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will do the Clerk's Report.
Be a result that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments speakers will be recognized who wish to address the Board on agenda items only. I think we're okay there. So we will move to our November Students of the Month, and we will start with the Elementary School and Mr. Meyer.
Thanks, Mrs. Tam, thanks for being here tonight, and we are very pleased as we head into this holiday season to introduce you to our Student of the Month, and we'd like to invite up Mackenzie Spring. Mackenzie, come on up. Mackenzie is a smart, funny, kind, and all-around amazing girl. She's enthusiastic about school and tries her best with all her endeavors. Her hard work and perseverance help her to succeed in whatever she puts her mind to. Mackenzie is very helpful to anyone who may need it and knows what needs to be done. She's always respectful and responsible. She can help Mrs. Tam run the classroom if necessary. Her kindness and generosity are greatly appreciated by all. Mackenzie's sense of humor and sociable nature make her a fun student to be around. Mackenzie's favorite subject in school is reading. She says it's because it feels like there is a lot of action with reading. She loves to read fiction books, especially the Ivy and Bean series. Mackenzie also enjoys going to art and computers in school. In art, she loves to paint. In computers, she likes to learn new things to do on the computer when she gets home. Mackenzie is very involved with sports. She's played softball since kindergarten. Although she enjoyed playing T-ball, she feels that softball gives it a challenge that she needs. She likes playing catcher and right field as well as getting up to bat as much as possible. Two other sports she enjoys are basketball and soccer. She prefers to play offense in both sports. That's pretty much everybody. If you want to see what Hampton Bay's spirit looks like, look no further than Mackenzie. She participates in any Spirit Week activities that we offer at Hampton Bay's Elementary School, from dressing up in pajamas, wearing her favorite jersey, or showing Baymen pride. Mackenzie's enthusiastic Hampton Bay spirit continues with her involvement in cheerleading. She started cheerleading in first grade and loves it. She loves learning and performing stunts. Favorite family activity of Mackenzie's is going to Florida to visit her grandpa, her aunts, and uncles and cousins. She enjoys the community where they live and sometimes visits Disney while she's down there. As a matter of fact, she just came back from Florida celebrating her birthday. Happy Birthday, Mackenzie. It is truly an honor to Mackenzie and Mrs. Tam's second-grade class this year. Everyone can count on Mackenzie to be a role model for her peers, to be a truly wonderful person. Congratulations on being November Student of the Month. You deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. I see Mr. Richard is already at the podium, so he's next.
Very eager, very eager to share some goods. It is my honor and privilege to present High School Student of the Month for the month of November, Natalie Pineda Figueroa. So Natalie is a ninth grader at Hampton Bay's High School and was nominated for this honor by her sixth studies teacher, Mr. Berger. When we first met, a few things were clear. Natalie is generally reserved, but passionate about art and serious about being successful, as indicated by her quarter-one report card with a ninety-five point eight average giving her high honors status. According to Mr. Berger, Natalie is a tremendous student with a work ethic that is second to none. She currently has a ninety-five average in global history and provides her best efforts at all times. She's consistently participating in class and serves as a role model for her classmates. Her art teacher, Mrs. Bishop, shared that she is an absolute pleasure to work with. Though quiet and reserved, Natalie works diligently through class and is thoughtful with each mark she makes. She is a talented young artist that continues to grow and develop each day, as I have been lucky to witness her growth and development in both studio art and art club. I'm looking forward to seeing Natalie grow in her own personal style and develop her artistic talents. And finally, her math teacher, Mrs. Vincent, wanted to offer that Natalie is respectful and a hard-working young woman, and she is truly a model student who's always ready to learn. She excels at explaining her work and never gives up and perseveres until she finds the correct answer. Natalie is a student with incredible determination, and we are really excited to see what she's going to bring over the next four years, both academically and in our co-curricular plans, especially in the art world. So congratulations, Natalie.
Okay, congratulations to both of our students. We're going to take a quick five-minute break so you can take pictures. I don't know if anybody wants to stay around for the juicy stuff, but we'll be back here in five. Yours, Clemmensen.
Good members, in your packet you have tonight's Superintendent's Report. I'll start with enrollment, and so you can see it's on the screen there as well. We are up in enrollment a little bit between November and December. Typically, historically, we do see December, January, a little bit of an uptick in new student enrollment. However, when you look on balance of where we were at the end of the two thousand and one twenty-two school year, two thousand and fifty-five students, kindergarten through twelfth grade, are still about, we are still thirteen lower than that at two thousand and forty-two. When we get back after the new year, we'll begin school budget planning in earnest for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year already. And we always start with a look at enrollment and projections. I know that, as well, when we get back from the new year and holiday break, that we're already moving into kindergarten registration, pre-K registration, and lottery as well. So the second part of the school year does go quickly between January and June as we start. We're not wrapping up January, but we're beginning those to look towards next year and all plans that are necessary across the three buildings. A slide here and in your packet regarding some athletic highlights. You can hear the varsity boys' basketball team is across the hall in the gymnasium. It's been an exciting start to the season. The winter season is a busier but less, busier but a smaller volume in terms of the amount of teams that we offer in the winter. There are just less sports that are available for kids. But a couple of notes, our volleyball team had a tremendous season last month. Reported that we made it to the Suffolk County Championships, which were held at Hopgog High School. And we had a number of postseason awards, including Coach of the Year honors to both coaches, Fotopolis at the varsity and junior varsity level. Asha Penza Johnson just had a fantastic year and made the All-State Team, fourth team, and then a number of All-County and All-League honors there as well. Scholar-Athlete Team, six of our nine fall varsity programs, achieved the designation of Scholar-Athlete, which is more than seventy-five percent of your students having a cumulative grade point average of ninety or better. And so we congratulate those coaches and, most importantly, those students. A couple of winter highlights to date. We started on November thirtieth. We kicked off the boys' basketball season with the Arthur J. Jones Basketball Home Opener, and the Jones family was present for that. Art Jones, as we know, was a class of nineteen eighty-two graduate in Hampton Bay's. He lost his life in the World Trade Center on nine eleven. Was a basketball player and varsity baseball player. The Art Jones Scholarship Foundation has provided more than three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships since two thousand and two. And so it was a nice tribute to Art and his memory and his family. We held the Doc Wrestling Duels this past Saturday, which is a Long Island wrestling community tradition that kicks off the winter season. And Newsday identified Casman Penza Johnson, who is a senior of ours as a top one hundred boys' basketball player on Long Island. So congratulations to Casman as well. Last week, the Hospitality Academy at Hampton Bay's, which is an adult education program of ours, was funded by a grant from Suffolk County Department of Labor last year. It was in partnership with the Canoe Place Inn and twenty-two other local hospitality organizations on the South Fork. We were awarded an industry, we were named an Industry Advancement Finalist in Discover Long Island, which is the Long Island Convention and Visitors Bureau. That is their name, Discover Long Island, their annual tourism awards. The Hospitality Academy at Hampton Bay is an Industry Advancement Finalist. We have a grant request pending before the Department of Labor at Suffolk County again this year to run a second program for the Hospitality Academy. We've had the chance to speak about that at the state level and the county level, to talk about adult education. It's a great complement to Mrs. Fotopolis's adult education program, where adults have, take courses in anything from developing a hobby like carving or Greek pastry baking to defensive driving, learning the English language. And now we have some job training going on as well. So it really rounds out the commitment to, the district's commitment to lifelong learning. At the high school the past week, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services worked with Mr. Morgan and Mr. Richard on a vape-out. Mr. Davidson coordinated as well through health classes. We had grade-wide assemblies, commitment pledges by kids, peer presentations on the dangers of vaping, and where to get help if needed for kids who might feel addicted to vaping. It continues to be a challenge here and everywhere. Vape devices continue to be something that are prohibited in schools, yet we are, in two thousand and twenty-two, we're all challenged with them in public education. State legislative session begins in January, so you will start to receive advocacy agendas. A number of those advocacy agendas come from our state and regional associations that advocate for us in Albany, including the Council of School Superintendents, School Boards Association at the New York State level, and then as well as Nassau Suffolk as well for superintendents and school boards. Early indicators of what the legislative session is shaping up to be include the final commitment of funding for the foundation aid fund. Then Governor Cuomo made the commitment that over a three-year period, districts would be made whole, as they say, as it relates to foundation aid. And that's state aid coming from Albany. We've been able to, we've been able to take care of a number of onetime expenses while we investigated and wondered and advocated to make sure that this commitment for funding isn't a flash in the pan and that the state's commitment is continuing. So that's number one. Mental health continues to be another major statewide priority across school districts and in the healthcare field as well. There is discussion as well related to transportation. As the state moves towards electric buses, there are a number of red flags that jump up about the state's capacity to do that on a very aggressive timeline. And then Larry and I were both involved in a meeting today regarding healthy school meals for all. So there is a campaign in New York State to provide for paid school meals, breakfast and lunch for all students. It would be an infusion of about two hundred million dollars at the state level. What it would do is provide meals during the COVID endemic. Meals were free, breakfast and lunch for any student who wanted to avail themselves of it. So we saw an increase, even despite the unique and challenging ways we had to eat, coming off of when it was most normal at the end, and Larry can speak more in-depth of questions to this. We saw more kids last year interested or potentially interested or eligible to take advantage of breakfast, lunch, and then the after-school snack because of being provided by subsidy from the federal government to all schools. That ran out and was not renewed by the federal government in their budget. And so there's an initiative at the New York State level to provision for New York State schools. It removes an administrative burden of getting the free and reduced, free or reduced lunch forms back from kids and also invites more kids to participate in the program without potentially worrying about the stigma of being a free or reduced lunch kid. They're not identified in any way. Something doesn't flash on that computer screen that says that, that would indicate to anybody else that a student is free or reduced lunch. But oftentimes, kids will select out of eating lunch because of the stigma that they feel about that. So that's really the crux of the initiative across New York State. When that's available, more kids eat, and then when more kids eat healthy meals consistently, they're better prepared to be successful at school. So I anticipate you'll start to see those things in the advocacy work that is coming over the next few weeks. As I mentioned, budget season will begin in January. The governor will offer her state of the state. That's really what kicks off the season. And the governor's budget is due to the legislature by February first. And then we'll adopt a budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year in April. Respiratory illnesses in the winter months continue to challenge us. And so a letter did go home to parents and community members last week that our nurses helped craft with Mr. Pagano, and when to keep kids home from school. We have ample number of COVID tests that are available. The CDC and DOH continue to recommend families talk to their doctors about staying up on their children's vaccine schedules. And we do continue to see kids and staff wearing masks from time to time. And so we encourage everybody to consider what they need to do to keep themselves healthy and to keep others healthy because we are seeing COVID, flu, RSV, the general cold, and viruses that continue to circulate. And we're just at the beginning of the winter months, so it's important that we keep our eyes open about that. The photo that you see on the slide before you is, was taken a few weeks ago on the roof of the new Canoe Place Inn. For a number of years now, the Southampton Business Alliance and this year, our new partners, the Reckler Equity Partners, have contributed to a building trades scholarship. So a few, a number of years ago, four years ago, the Southampton Business Alliance expressed interest to local Southampton Town Schools about investing in kids going to trade school. They'd rotate a scholarship, a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, to Southampton Town High Schools for kids that were interested in the building trades. So specifically, that's electrical and alternative energy, HVAC, plumbing, and carpentry. And so the Southampton Business Alliance, as business owners on the East End, have a vested interest in making sure that the next generation of industry workers are qualified and available and exist. What has, what this has changed to is providing eleventh and twelfth graders with scholarships anywhere between two hundred fifty and three hundred fifty dollars to provide for their BOSI's tool belts, grounding boots, coveralls, toolboxes. And those are the expenses that BOSI's asks kids to pay out of pocket for those materials. And so we've been able to provide scholarships to those kids before they even leave school. We coordinate the project on both of West Hampton, Hampton Bay, Southampton, and Bridge Hampton. And to date, in its fourth year, the Southampton Business Alliance and now Reckler Equity has invested twenty-seven thousand dollars in kids who are interested in pursuing the building trades. So it's a smart investment, and it's a real shot in the arm for a number of our kids. And then I'll just highlight a project that was done at the elementary school. Happy Holidays Service Member. So our kids engage in letters and holiday greeting cards to Baymen servicemen and women around the world. We didn't capture them all, but holiday greetings from the elementary school are going out to Korea, Japan, Connecticut, and the naval base in Virginia Beach. So that's where, right now, we have Baymen who we are keeping in touch with as well. And then I'll end on a note where we, just as school district, express our sadness and thoughts and prayers to the Mensch family. That's Montbuck Bus, North Fork Express. Greg Mensch, who ran North Fork Express, passed away too soon and unexpectedly last week. The Mensch family has been partner of the Hampton Bay Schools for over forty years, and we've relied on them for safe transportation in all that time. And Linda and her brother Craig were friends of ours. And so our thoughts and prayers are with Greg's memory and certainly with Linda and her entire family. Any questions from the Board?
I have a quick question about the scholarships. Are we helping our students apply for these scholarships or making sure that they're available to them and everyone is?
So the beauty, the beauty of this is the kids don't know the scholarship exists. We, simply their enrollment in the program awards them the scholarship. And so it's not, and the beauty of the Southampton Business Alliance and the investment they've made is that the amount of money is determined after we determine the amount of kids who are in the program. So this year, we, Hampton Bay's only had two kids in the building trades, one in electric, one in electrical and one in HVAC. And Southampton had more, but that changes each year, and sometimes we have more. The beauty of that is that the Southampton Business Alliance cuts the check after we tell them how many kids are in. It's a pretty cool thing to knock on the door and tell a kid, hey, here's three hundred bucks. You have a checking account? Go get this cash. It's a real endorsement of the, of their, they're passionate about.
So that's, that's any kid, though? Whether they're Hampton Bay's, West Hampton, Southampton, they're all automatically eligible?
Yep. Yep, just by the, so some of the programs are years, they give the scholarship in year one.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmensen. We move on to some financial with Mr. Luce.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. I don't have a specific report tonight, but I'll be happy to answer questions or go over anything in the agenda regarding the construction and building projects. There's a couple of resolutions. The first one goes with SECRE, just, you know, making sure that we've taken the proper steps for the state and declaring the type of action that we're going to do on the projects out on the field. The other one is a couple change orders that have occurred or going on. And then the last two go into a use of our reserve fund for roofs and HVAC. The auditorium HVAC system has reached its end of life. It is not reliable. We can't control that it will come on and go off when we want to. If we followed the process, we would probably be a year without HVAC and potentially some chance for problems in the auditorium. So we're recommending that we push this forward as an emergency project so that by May, we have HVAC back in that, in that area. And we're insured this summer that we don't have any damage due to, you know, humidity and so on in that room. Moving that along. And then the last is just, again, clarifying for, it's kind of a clarifying resolution for the state on the capital projects that are grant-funded. You've already approved this stuff, but it's restating it for the state and putting it in a resolution so that it's documented in board minutes. That's about it.
No penalty for moving forward with the?
The only, the only potential penalty, Mr. Springer, is we missed out on the state aid of that, which would be ten percent of the project spread out over fifteen years. So you're looking at about a thousand dollars a year. It is penalty if you want to look at it that way. We missed that aid. But I think if I could predict what would happen over the summer without HVAC in that auditorium, I think we'd spend way more than fifteen thousand dollars trying to keep that room from being damaged by humidity and so on over the course of summer.
Molded mildew?
Molded mildew, et cetera, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else have any questions there? If not, we will move on to Student Services. No questions, I need a motion. What's that? Oh, we didn't do, my apologies. I need a motion from four A to four J.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we're on to five. Any questions? Nope, I need a motion then. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. If there are no questions for person, which is 6A to 6I, I will need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Board of Education Policy, which is 7A to 7E, I need a motion.
A motion?
Yep, my apologies. Yep, 7A to, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The Board President will recognize all speakers. Please identify yourself, your town, the topic of which you were speaking. Timelapse may be imposed based upon agenda needs. Is there anybody who has any questions? Okay. If that's the case, I thank you all for coming. Get home safely. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion passes.
If you have a public comment, you're in.
That was just it.
We just had it.
Yes. Public comment. Persons may address the board. Please stand.
I'm allowed?
Yes, please stand.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeremiah Collins. For you, it's J-E-R-E-M-I-H. Last name is Collins, pretty easy one. I'm here tonight to advocate for my grandson, who's a 7th grader here in the school. I have a stake in this school. I have two grandchildren going here, one in the high school and one in the 7th grade. I can understand what a difficult time this board has with the amount of enrollment that you have in this district, and that you can't really know everything that's going on. Now, I was a school board member in a smaller district in this town, where there were 180 students. You probably have that in three classes. But, you know, I did learn a few things in my eight years there. And by going to school board conferences, which I would highly recommend if nobody's been to one, we went almost every year. And we were able to talk to people from all over the state, from Niagara Falls to Shelter Island, all over the place. Talked to our people in towns where the children have to go to YMCA's to lock their laptops up at the end of their work. We're pretty fortunate here. This whole area has great school system. I'm not trying to butter you guys up, but let me tell you, I have a lot of respect for you folks who are in such a large district. In a little, small district I had, I was on the phone all the time. When I was president, every call. Somebody scraped their knee, you got another call. So I can't imagine, Lawrence, how your phone must ring. I'm sure you have assistant principals and principals. But the problem is, my grandson's been harassed and bullied in this school since last June. There have been a number of incidents. I'm sure the administration has an idea what's going on. But nothing has worked so far to correct this. This has been going on since June, where it took place on a school bus, and a video was taken, and that video was shared throughout the whole middle school. And my grandson was the subject of that video. And he was being abused in that video. So, you know, it's not always the problem. It's how we deal with it, you know? And this problem is not being dealt with. We have not had any satisfaction from, from really anybody here. And when my grandson couldn't come to school because he's a sensitive guy, and they were really ragging on him, and he couldn't come to school. He emotionally could not make it here. So what happened was, the police were sent to their house and Child Protection Services. So what I'm doing, I'm imploring you to look into this problem, this situation, look into it deeply, because my grandson is not lying about these things. I can assure you of that. If he says it happened, it happened. And I'm not saying he's totally innocent. There's always two sides of the story. But I'm concerned about it, and I'm concerned about it because what happens now is going to go beyond here. It's going to go through high school. It's going to go through college. And he's a bright kid. So we don't want to ruin that. So we really need to address the situation. Legally, he has a right to have the school direct, direct people to look into it, reporting systems. There are many things that school boards have to do. And we know there's a thing called the Dignity Act. Well, Dignity Act was passed because bullying and cyberbullying and harassment are taking place all over the state. But it's the school districts that deal with it properly that can keep it down, that can put in some kind of character standards. I'm afraid that that's down the tubes, the character standards. There should be set standards for our students. I'm sorry I had to come here tonight. My son-in-law is here, and he has a letter that I'm going to distribute from his brother, who is an educator in the city, Harvard graduate, smart guy, uses a lot of big words that I don't know. But anyway, last year, a cellphone was put under a stall where he was using the toilet. Now, it was determined that there was no photo taken. However, if there was a photo taken, that's a criminal offense, okay? Because when someone is in an area where they feel they have privacy, you are not allowed to interfere with that privacy. I don't know if there's any attorneys on board, but I'm sure that they could address that. It's a criminal offense. Seven years, seven graders are committing criminal offenses if that was taped. I don't know if it was. It was determined that it was not. But the act alone of putting the camera under there is serious. And how would you expect a 12-year-old boy to not be upset by that and want to come back to school? Is he afraid to go on a school bus? Yeah. Why? Because that's where it all started. Is he afraid to go to the bathroom? Yeah. Why? Because somebody put the camera under his stall. This is really, really serious stuff. So I implore you to please look into this deeply. Don't take any student's word. I need, this needs to be investigated. Like I said, it's a possibility of criminal acts taking place, and my grandson is protected by the Dignity Act. All right? I don't know if everybody knows what that is. I'm sure most of you do. If you're on school board, you know about it. But I thank you for your service to the community. I thank you for your service to this whole town, the students that live in the town. So please keep up the good work and do what you can for my grandson, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a nice letter. I, I want to speak from the heart.
It's okay.
You know, I want to board you for the town. Some people don't read from it, and I don't want to, I like to hear what, what's in the heart.
That's why we have public comment.
I'm sorry.
No worry about it.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. How good.
You remember how it's done?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is from my son-in-law's brother.
Mr. Collins, after we're off-air here, I'd like to get your number and your email if possible.
Sure.
I need to close out the meeting first. Okay. If there are no more public comments, I will move to adjourn the meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Happy holidays. We will not see you before that. Enjoy. Stay safe.